Okay, good evening. I'll call to order the March 16th, 2020, meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, and our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. And after that, I'm going to ask our Chaplain Reverend Patrick Womack to come forward and give our invocation. So if everyone please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance between the flag of the United States of America and the Republic of which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
May we pray. God of our fathers, in days gone by, your people have called out to you in times of war and pestilence. And in this day, oh Lord, when we find ourselves in the midst of a worldwide pandemic, once again, we call out to you, praying for your protection and for your deliverance from all that would harm us. Father, we especially lift up those who are most vulnerable among us, those who would be susceptible not only to this disease, but to other disadvantages and means of harm that might come their way. We pray for your protection. We pray for wisdom for those who govern us, from the national to the state to here at this local level, and in fact, we pray for these commissioners this evening, as they meet together, that they may be able to discern your thoughts and be guided by your spirit to decide matters in a way that will result in the greatest good for the greatest number. So we ask you, oh Lord, for help, and we cry out to you for protection, for wisdom, and for discernment. We may truly find ourselves humbled before you, acknowledging our need of you. And indeed, we pray all in your name. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Womack. Our next order of business is called a public hearing, and we have a request for public hearing on April 6th, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. in Historic Courtroom of the Historic Courthouse in Waynesville. And I have our county attorney Frank Queen to explain that, and that's under Attachment 1 of your packets.
Mr. Chairman and members, the state law and county ordinance requires the county commissioners to have a public hearing before naming a road in the county. We have a request to name Stone Creek Drive, and the public hearing for that will be held Monday, April 6th, at 9:00 a.m. for public comment and action by the board.
Okay. Okay, so we'll schedule that for the date I just announced, April 6th at 9:00 a.m. Thank you. Okay, our next order of business is our public comment session, and I have two people signed up to speak, and you have, I'll just say you have three minutes to speak, and I've got a timer up here, so if you hear it start beeping, you'll know your time. Just try to finish up your thoughts, if you would. And the first person I have signed up to speak is Mary Ann Widenhouse. Is that correct? Good evening.
Good evening. You got my name right.
Oh, good.
Thank you. My husband and I have lived in Haywood County now for about four years. We are delighted to be here. What I want to talk to you tonight about, do they have the papers that I gave you? I had some papers for you to look at while I'm talking.
Okay.
I'm the president of the Haywood County affiliate of the National Alliance on Mental Illness. PBS is going to be airing a documentary on April the 13th called Bedlam: An Intimate Journey Into America's Mental Health Crisis. They were partnering with a number of organizations across the country to show this film pre-release in local communities to get the conversation going on important issues in local communities. We were supposed to have ours March the 27th, which is on your pretty little piece of paper that you've got. Unfortunately, COVID-19 is going to preclude that. But I wanted to let you know that we're still working on, after the film will be shown on PBS on the 13th, it will be available for a month for streaming online, and we're trying to work a way to do that for a group so we can start this conversation. Bedlam is a film that was, as you can see on there, was done by Dr. Stephen Rosenberg, a psychiatrist, whose sister had schizophrenia, received very little help. There was a great deal of shame and silence within his family because of that, and so he has done this documentary to focus on shame and silence, as well as what's happening in our EDs, what's happening with people who are homeless, and what's happening in our criminal justice system. Those are the four areas that he's focusing on. I realize that there are many people in our area who have issues with all of those. It's become a hot topic, some of those, especially the homeless issue. With the continued reduction of funds for those people who are uninsured or underinsured from our General Assembly, and their unwillingness to expand Medicaid, I think it is time for us as a county to really look closely at how we're supporting people. Most of your people in the criminal justice system, homeless group, and many people in EDs are uninsured or underinsured. I would like to ask you and invite you to watch this film on TV. It's going to be on UNC TV on April the 13th. It says at 10 o'clock. I have not received any other information on that. So I would like to invite you to do that and think seriously about how we, and we're doing lots of good things here, but we can build on that and do better. So I thank you.
Thank you, and I agree with you, by the way. That's good. Okay, our next speaker is Mike Graham. Welcome, Mike.
Mark.
Mark Graham.
Kevin. Brandon.
Oh.
Sorry. Right around the corner from the restaurant. I can't remember the name. Listen, you guys are wonderful. I mean, you've done an amazing job, all of you guys, for the county. I noticed the last meeting y'all had, you had your little presentation on the COVID virus, and I watched that. At that particular time, none of y'all showed any real urgency. Now, Kevin, I know we just got us, you know, a state of emergency, but just a notice, you know, what do you want us to do? You got a plan? When is the first time your task force met? You know?
We're meeting now.
Huh?
We've been meeting.
Been meeting? Why? I read it.
I don't want to go back and forth between.
Okay, okay, thanks. Okay. Time is of the essence, okay? Please, I'm already being proactive, okay? You know, I'm, the teachers, I don't know why you got teachers at school. There's nothing for them to do. They should be home with their children, okay? So their children don't have to go to daycare, spread the disease, you know? Well, that's what the law says. Well, come on, guys, it's a state of emergency. Sometimes you got to break the laws. If you guys are too afraid, you know, put me in charge, you know? Let them sue me, let them take me to jail, say, well, that's against law, you shouldn't have done that. Well, the lady was dying. Come on. Do you know how many beds are available at that hospital? What's the capacity? Did they tell you? Did the community? Yes, no? Is it, if it's no, is it because it's a private hospital, for-profit? I mean, a for-profit hospital? They cut their costs all the time, okay? They rip your customers off with their billing, okay? Now, when we need them, what are they saying? Well, we're corporate, says we have to, we can't do this, you know? Screw that. You know, if they don't do what we're going to do, they're going to have a class action lawsuit from every citizen in this county, okay? They need to get their ass in gear, okay? I'm giving away free food at my restaurant for people, you know, your first responders and your police officers, if they come in, they're hungry, we're going to give them a meal. If somebody that says they're hungry, we're not going to charge them. I want to profit. The game is over, okay? Let's stop the game, you know, when it's raining. In the baseball game, we stop the game, cover the field, wait for the storm to go. You start right where you left off, kind of like a jubilee for a couple of months. You guys really put your heads together, okay? You know, this is when you can shine. I want to see you shine. Make Haywood County citizens proud of you, okay? You've done good to this point, now the game is on the line. Unfortunately, we're down by 10 with four minutes left. We're going to have to go with the full court press. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else that would like to address the?
I'm sorry.
Time's up.
I would suggest that maybe you suspend the rest of the meeting and start discussing this stuff, if you haven't already, okay?
Yeah, okay. Would anyone else like to address the board? I think no one else closed the public comment session, and we'll move on to constituent concerns, and I'm going to have, under constituent concerns, I want to have a Corona's update from our HHS Public Health Director, Patrick Johnson. And Patrick, I think he's got some slides prepared. And Patrick, I appreciate you coming in tonight to do this.
Sure. Thank you all.
Mike, you might want to stay.
So when this all started, we all started out with non-pharmaceutical interventions, wash your hands, cover your cough, clean surfaces, and then we have kind of moved on to this, what we've heard a lot about is flattening the COVID curve, which is the social distancing, which is being, which is what we're hearing quite a bit about right now. And I wanted to explain a little bit about what that is all about. Flattening the curve means that we really, at this point, can't quite stop the virus. We have to slow down the virus. We have to mitigate the virus. The way to do this, what we need to do right now is to decrease the strain on our healthcare facilities and to decrease the severity of the impact on our citizens, decrease the number of diseases, and slow down the severity of the disease. What you see in red is really what happened in Italy. They were not, they did not do enough to mitigate the disease, and it overwhelmed their system. And what is going on in the United States, across the United States right now, is the measures that North Carolina is taking to slow it down in terms of decreasing the amount of crowd, basically crowd control, is keeping people away from one another. Okay, so what we know now is, in the United States, we're number eight in the world of COVID. Cases are increasing. We know there's community spread. COVID is not contained. It has to be mitigated. Now, testing, we hear so much about testing, and I would like to just take a moment about, to talk about testing. It is available commercial, and it is available at the North Carolina State Lab. Here's what I want to explain. Testing at doctors' offices, they have specimen collection kits, not test kits. They, there is no screening test. We have people calling us regularly, asking if they can get screened for COVID. There is not a screening test like, say, a diabetes screening test, a glucose tolerance test, something like that. There is no screening test for COVID. It is a diagnostic test. Someone has to have symptoms of COVID in order to be tested. They should, there's the three things that we've heard over and over and over again: a fever of 100.2, a cough, and a negative flu test. Those are the three things we want people should have before they have a test. The specimen collection is fairly simple. However, the person who does that test has to be extremely careful and extremely protected because they don't want to get infected. So it is complicated in that sense. Just to explain the test, it's a nasopharyngeal swab that is placed in one nostril, and it is left in the nostril for just a few seconds to absorb some secretions, and then it is placed in a viral medium. That is then just sent off to a lab. It's that simple. We send it, it would be sent off by UPS or FedEx. Okay, in North Carolina and Haywood County, we've had a state of emergency. We know North Carolina cases are, the transmission is classic. It's plane and car, it's travel. That's how it will arrive here, just by that, those means. We know where the outbreaks are occurring in the two big states, Washington, North, I mean, New York and Washington State. I tell people this all the time, don't we think there are Haywood residents in some of those countries and some of those states? That's how it will arrive here. And I saw this, and I think we have to pay attention to this. If we don't pay attention to these mitigating factors, an epidemiologist mathematician said if we don't do these things, by the end of April, we could have as many as a million cases in the United States, and there's an R factor or a reproduction factor that doubles every six days. That would mean five days later, 2 million, five days later, 4 million. Right now, I think there's 3,800 cases in the United States, I think. Okay, let's see if in six days, there's 7,600 cases. All right, and if every county, state is going through the same thing, the healthcare system and healthcare workers would be overwhelmed. That's why we have to slow the curve. That's the reason behind social distancing, to slow down the spread of the disease and reduce the spread, reduce the severity on the people and the healthcare system. So this is my last slide, comfort and discomfort. We will get through this. We know we're going to get through this eventually, through strong community partnerships and cooperations. The cooperations are vital for a coordinated, successful response that you, Kevin, know we've been started in Bryant, and Greg's going to talk about that coordinated response in a moment. But also discomfort. We need to be prepared for cases in Haywood County. Our citizens need to tolerate discomfort in the coming months in order to get through this. We need everyone to help respond to this emerging public health threat. Event cancellations are just the beginning of challenges we will be asked to endure. The first time I did this, these slides, earlier last week, schools be closed, and then they were closed. That decision has many implications. My message is, don't panic and don't be complacent. We need to take this seriously. I think everyone has that message right now. I am asking people to help the health department staff by using that North Carolina coronavirus helpline, which is listed right there, to call that for questions. It's open 24/7. And if I could just say one more thing to help people, we need to turn off the media a little bit and relax, and not get too overwhelmed by what we're hearing. We need to get outside and exercise, eat nutritious food, and get some sleep. It's just making a lot of people very panicked right now, and we don't need to panic. I appreciate the support everyone has given me. So after Greg, I'll be here for questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Upon notification that the county commissioners had developed a state of emergency, we activate our emergency action plans, and our plan includes, the first step is to create a policy group. We don't want a team of folks to be managing an emergency without guidance, and so that policy group has met a couple of times, but including today, as early as 2:30 this afternoon, to give guidance to this team that we are forming to help the health director lay out this flattening the curve guidance that we're talking about. Some of the objectives that we, that were included and given and assigned to your team that's going to do this is, includes developing strategies or alternatives for this testing and screening process. Also, the sharing of information, we don't simply want to repeat CDC guidance. I think we've heard enough of that, and that's where I believe Patrick was talking about, you know, kind of cutting off this national news type situation. We want to be able to give more detailed guidance to the restaurant owners. We want to give guidance to the medical community. We want to give guidance to law enforcement and public safety agencies so that they know what, what does that CDC guidance mean locally? I think that's what really matters, is how we take care of the communities. And that's the guidance that we have been given, and we're going to work hard to try to do those things. The most important thing that we're doing, though, is trying to engage the entire community. We've spoken with the hospitals, and we've spoken with many of the faith-based organizations. We've tried to engage and empower those kind of folks because we know when we engage the community, that's when we get the best, the best sharing of information that we need for our community. Thank you.
Anybody having questions for? Is there anything you can foresee? I know Wake County is just now starting to see it. Is there anything you see on the EMS side of it? I know the fire departments aren't going to be coming to certain calls, and that's going to put an undue strain on your folks. Is there anything you need that you can see ahead of time?
You know, that's a great question, and I think that by looking at some alternative strategies there, maybe sending out one person, the community paramedics is one of the ideas that's been kicked around to do so. Also, additional part-time staffing to augment the staff that we have now happened today, and we're working on trying to beef up and make sure we have enough folks to work. And so these are some of the things we're working on right now, but there could be other things that we should consider.
Well, I know from my background that a lot of times, you just kind of do what you got to do as long as you need to do it, but if it starts becoming a burden and there's something we need to do, by all means, even though we're not having a meeting, you need to let some of us know so we can figure out something.
Thank you.
Maybe reach out to the local fire departments as well, or volunteer fire departments, and communicate with them. You know, I've talked with a couple of them this past week, and they're willing to help any way they can, reaching out in their own communities. So I'm sure you will, I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you very much. We did have one conference call with them already, but you know, that close communication is important, and we're going to make sure we do that.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I think y'all were calling the restaurants, or health department was calling restaurants, I think.
Yeah, we sent out guidance. Environmental Health has a distribution list of 214 or 240 restaurants in Haywood County. We sent out guidance to them this afternoon.
Okay, good. So they've got that information. And I know the EMS has been, I know EMS and HHSA have been fielding a ton of calls from citizens, and so we'll be setting up, I believe, a line for that, maybe, or?
The call, you're talking about your nurses?
Oh, yes, yes. Well, we ended up getting six school nurses today, so we're having them help us monitor the phone calls. We're moving all of those calls that are coming through to us, and they're helping us manage them. If we can't answer them, we're moving them to that 1-866 number. But we're answering the local calls the best we can. We're just taking them all right now.
And then, Patrick, I know you talked about, in your conference today, about a drive-by clinic?
Yes.
Maybe, where was that at?
Okay, well, there's, Mercy is having one at Flat Rock, I believe, tomorrow, and Pardee is having one in Hendersonville on Saturday. I've reached out to Mr. Huckle Road. If they are willing to do one, we would partner with them. The health department would do the business. We would be doing the guidance with anyone who is tested, and they would have to go through that criteria. If they are tested, then they would have to be put on isolation, and we would be taking over that part of the testing process. That's what's going on in those other drive-throughs. The private industry is doing the testing, and the health department is taking over the isolation business. And a person who is tested right now is in, if they're not, if they're going through a drive-through, they're not going to be sick enough to be going straight to the hospital, more than likely. They're going to be told exactly, they drive to their home, they have to be self-isolated, and then we have to start monitoring them right away.
Okay, okay. Questions?
You know, I was privileged to sit in a meeting yesterday morning, on Sunday morning. I don't know if Mr. Graham's still here, but the county staff's been doing an excellent job, some of the department heads and this task force you have in place. We were here nearly three hours yesterday morning discussing some contingency plans and getting Greg ramped up on what his department needs to do, but something that came out of the meeting on our haywoodcounty.gov website, our IT department has put a tab on the top-left corner on the homepage, and it's a coronavirus update tab. I think Joey got that going, so it's very informative. He'll try to keep that up to date. And also, you know, something to communicate to your community. You know, the faith-based groups in our county are tremendous. I know I was in contact with my church today. Our secretary has got a phone tree program. Many community clubs, churches, and other organizations have phone tree programming on their messaging system. So she programmed all the shut-ins, the widows, our at-risk groups. I instructed her to send a phone tree message out to, you know, contact them, let them know we're concerned, and if there's anything we can do to help, if it's to transport them or carry them supplies, groceries, medicines of that nature. And I know our county can pull together and get through this, you know? I think you've communicated well about not panicking. This is a situation that's probably, in our generation, is probably something we haven't seen. But it's not unlike other national crises. You know, I think of World War II, I think of the polio crisis, I think smallpox, the Spanish flu in 1918, 1919. We're not walking down a road that's entirely new. Other people have gone through things of this nature. And I think we had a great president who actually suffered effects of polio, and I think of some very calming words he had for the people when he told the nation that the only thing we have to fear is fear itself. And when we got pulled into a world conflict at Pearl Harbor, we didn't want that, we don't want this, but we mobilized as a nation, and we pulled together, and we pooled our resources. Many people had to, you know, pay the ultimate price, but everybody pulled together and did what we needed to do as a nation. And I think we'll do that as a county, as a state, and as a nation. There's going to be maybe some, already some very big bumps in the road, but I will commend the task force that's been meeting. You have a good plan. I commend the county manager and everybody that was here yesterday, a whole room full of people. And so we'll get through this, but we need to follow the guidelines and keep preaching, you know, this social distancing, and try to stay away from people who might be exhibiting those symptoms, cover your cough, and do those steps, and we'll pray that we'll see some results from those over the next weeks. So thank you for all the work you're doing.
Sure. Well said.
I guess I just had a couple of questions. Can you distinguish this between, as to other viruses, and why this is, why this is such a different situation that we're facing?
You know, it's a novel coronavirus, and they're very unusual, and, you know, this took everybody by surprise. I, you know, that's a good question. It's, that's kind of one of the epidemiologists. It's one that no one has any immunity to, no one has a vaccine for, and it just, it's, humans don't have any immunity to. It's very contagious, and it's a respiratory spread, that's primarily. That's, that's the big... That's, that's the big deal. A respiratory spread that no one has immunity to and there's no vaccine to. That's basically it. And it is, you know, it, it causes severe disease and, and it's got a lethality of about anywhere from two to three percent, depending on the age and risk factors of the person.
Two to three percent of the people who get it.
Yeah, 1.4 to 3% depending on the person's risk factors seems to change depending on the data.
I just, you know, I understand the, all the things that, that need to be done, but what I haven't understood is, you know, and I understand the numbers that could potentially occur if you don't do certain things. And the fact that, that we don't have, you know, there's not some type of cure for it, but I'm trying to get my, my hands are at least a good understanding of why the reaction is the way it is when there's so many things that kill so many people every day and, and yet we're focusing so much on this. And I understand it, I mean, it's not like I don't completely understand it, but I mean, we're taking serious actions and for things that, that, I mean, that have affected very few people and I don't know that, and also I'm, I'm not certain of, you know, they say, well, we've had this number of deaths. So who are the people that are dying and what were they, what did they have when they contracted this? And were they possibly going to die of something soon anyway? I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to downplay it, I just want to understand it.
Well, I think what we know is that because it's a respiratory spread and because there's no vaccine and there's no treatment for it, if we don't do what, you know, China's a totalitarian country and the way they clamped down on it is because they are a totalitarian country. We are not. The, if, we're basically, first we started to ask people to not gather and then we're having to tell people to not gather. And if we don't do these things, we will be spreading it like crazy. I mean, I just heard on the radio, one of the things we really have to focus on is the millennials and ask the millennials to not gather into groups greater than 10. It's going to spread considerably because there's no vaccine and there's no treatment if it gets in our community. That's, and you know, you said, why is it so, such of a big, big deal? It's because of our social media and the 24/7 news cycle. And that's why people are so panicked and I don't quite understand the toilet paper stuff, but people are just so panicked about all this stuff. That's why I say at a certain point, all of us have to take a break from it. We took a break last night for about three hours, but we didn't have the TV on, no media, nothing. Just shut it off. We have to do that and we have to get some exercise for our own mental health. We have to shut this stuff off for a little while. We can't not pay attention to what's going on, but we have to shut it off every now and then.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? I do want to thank Patrick and all our staff and Greg. I know Greg and Patrick have been working around the clock to, you know, to, to, to battle this and to make sure that we're following a plan, that we have a plan. And don't think, Mr. Graham's comments, don't think, because you've not heard something that we're not doing anything because we've been doing a lot. I know we had a three-hour meeting Friday with all the, the department heads and, and some of the stakeholders. And, and so we're, we're on top of it, I think, as much as you could be. And we're, as I've, as I said this morning to the staff, we're, we're kind of plowing you ground. I think we're going to look back on this time to see how we handle this and it'll be a, a template for when it happens again and everything. So, and I mean, I'd heard, I was watching a doctor today was explaining it and, and I don't want to say what he said because I'm not sure how accurate what he said was, but he was just saying it's, it's such a novel thing that we just, like Patrick said, we don't have a cure for it and we don't, we can't treat it. And you know, young people generally tolerate it okay, but it's the young people taking it to the elderly that we've got to be concerned about and those that have, you know, compromised immune systems and that's a, a lot of people in our society. So we want to, you know, we want to try to negate that as much as we can. And I think it's, it's just a, a serious, you know, over the whole country. You know, Italy was, Italy's about the size of Arizona and it has a population of probably California and Florida combined. And so I think it's around 62 million people, but they've had, they, I guess they're probably past 2,000 now, but I mean, they, the, I think my wife had looked on the website and it was maybe 800 or 1,000 and it was already 1,800 by the end of the weekend. So it's just, it's just, it's really, you know, their numbers keep going up and they're, the curve that Patrick's talking about, they're, they've not even topped out yet. And so it's still going there. So, and that, and that is an older society and our county's an older county. I mean, I've heard that we're the second oldest county in the state. I'm not sure if that's still true or not, but we have a lot of retirees here and I know we want to try to keep the lid on this as much as we can. And, and I appreciate everybody's efforts and all the department heads and all the time that y'all spent this weekend and, and for the past week and, and what you're going to be doing in the, in the future. And that we had, we called, I think Lindsay Regner from the Sheriff's Department is a PIO. She's helping us out some. We called her in this weekend, so a lot of people kind of had their weekends interrupted. And I know Greg and Patrick and, and all our staff, Brian and Chris and I'm probably missing a lot of people, but David, I appreciate everybody coming in and doing what they did yesterday and Tommy, Tommy came in. You know, usually we're in church at 10 o'clock on Sunday morning. We weren't, we weren't, we were here. And so because we know it's important and we want to make sure that we stay on top of it. So thank you all for all you all are doing. And then along those lines, I want to read, you know, Tommy was talking about our nonprofits and our nonprofits have stepped up. I know Mountain Projects had issued a statement I want to read. They have a hotline number. Mountain Projects is implementing a hotline to seek to meet emergency and critical needs of our most high-risk and most vulnerable populations in Haywood and Jackson Counties over the next two weeks. So anyone needing supplies, medicine, pickup and deliveries, and they've got an 800 number, which is 800-627-1548, between the hours of 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM, Monday through Thursday. And if needs and situations warrant, the hours will be expanded. So anyone wishing to volunteer, please contact the same number. So if you'd like to, if you're out there and you'd like to volunteer, it's 1-800-627-1548 and you can volunteer and Mountain Projects would definitely take, would take that. I know yesterday they put out a call for people to bring items in for food boxes and they had a, a great turnout, I know. And I think it was yesterday between two and, three and five, I believe, the people had folks bring stuff by. So, but anyway, that number is 1-800-627-1548 and that's Mountain Projects. So I want to get that out too today. And I know our other nonprofits are working hard to, they're taking their precautions. They're struggling to figure out what to do. So I, I saw somebody that said, you know, and like Patrick was saying, kind of, I mean, we, we want to listen to the media, but don't just dwell on the media, but do listen to and pay attention to the CDC because that's where the media is getting their talking points is from the CDC. So, and that's what we're putting out on our website. So HaywoodCountyNC.gov and you can click on the link. Joey's keep, keeping that updated as much as he can. And are we going to put that on the television maybe? If we, we're looking, maybe putting it on television. So we're, we're doing a lot and it's, it's kind of discouraging when somebody says you're not doing anything when you're doing a lot. And I know our staff are as busy as they're, as they've been all year and, and they don't know when it's going to end because Patrick's thinking we might, you know, we could be looking as much as four months at least. So we want to definitely be, be prepared. Okay? Okay. Does anybody have any other comments? Does anybody have any other constituent concerns maybe?
Yeah, I've got one, Kevin. It has to do with, it goes along the same lines, I think, but I know our fire departments have an annual meeting that they're required to do. And Julie, this might be a question for you, but I was asked this evening if there'd be a possibility of us waiving their annual meeting, not, not necessarily waiving it entirely for the year, but just postponing it and putting it off. Is that something we could consider?
Since it's a policy from the county, then you, you could certainly consider it.
When do those have to be done or?
What they do is they have, they, they need to have a public meeting to talk about their budget and their tax rate. And if they have another way to do it through email and that kind of thing, they really do need to let the citizens in their fire district know about their budget and their tax rate. So they can do that rather than have a public meeting. I think in this circumstance, it'd be up to you if you wanted to waive that.
When, when do they have to have that done by though? Is it like June 1st or July 1st or?
No, they need to have their, if they're going to have a public meeting, they need to have it relatively soon. They need to get their information back to us. I believe we've got it sometime in April. I don't remember the exact date. I can find that, but it's, it's happening right now. I'm sure that's why the question, whether they could not have their meeting because of the not being around groups.
I don't know what you guys think about it. I don't know if, if you'd be interested in waiving it, putting it off for a couple of months and do business as usual until then or what you think or?
Mr. Chairman, I'll leave it up to you. Well, given the fact of the number of people that typically have to show up for those, it's kind of contrary to what we're being told we need to do right now. So, I mean, if we follow the policy that's been recommended by the president, then they don't need to be having those until this is over with and who knows when that'll be. Make them to be decided when this is over, when the state of emergency has been lifted, we'll discuss it again. Because?
There may be, there may be other instances where we have to deal with situations like Guess we're kind of at the mercy of the spread of this disease at this time and what our state and federal authorities are guiding us to do on how many people supposed to be meeting at one time in one place and, and things of that nature to prevent the spread of it. May not just be the fire departments we have to deal with or other agencies are having to deal with some of the same things. I know I got two cancellations today on other meetings that, that were on the calendar and they, they had to cancel them because of this directive that we have. So.
Sort of being lying, Kevin, to suspend it based off of what we've got now until the state of emergency though? Do we need to do something about that or would just go by the guidelines? Tell them to follow the guidelines that have been issued?
Well, if they did the guidelines, Julie, you're saying they could do email? Is that?
I think because we're talking about the tax rate.
Right.
That they do need to somehow notify the people in their district.
Yeah, it's actually a meeting, the, the meeting that's required is not the meeting of the Volunteer Fire Department, Inc. It's the meeting of the persons in the fire district. And so we have a contract with all of the volunteer fire departments. Every one of them has a separate contract that requires them to have these meetings that are open to the public that allow them to examine and review their budgets and all that hoo-ha. But the, the group that has to meet and that has to have this public notice of a meeting is the residents of the fire district. They just, as a matter of fact, meet at the volunteer fire departments, but that, the, the fire district meetings are, are set by, maybe set by state law. I know it's described in the contracts that we have. Commissioner Pliss thinks it's not state law and it may not be, it may be just a matter of contract with each volunteer fire department.
It's our contracts, the county's contracts to the fire departments stipulate it. There's nothing in law that requires them to have a meeting period.
Okay, so if that's the case and if we don't have to worry about a state law compliance, then if it's a contract term, then we can waive any unilateral, either with the permission of each fire department, we could waive that contractual provision. I still think that you have to publicize the budget and, and that kind of stuff. The manager just suggested that maybe we could collect their budgets and publish them on our website indexed under each, in each fire district. And then we could figure out some kind of equivalent public involvement.
But maybe this will be passed by the time we come to our public hearing on the budget, but we could always incorporate the fire districts and their tax rates and what it will generate in revenue and have that as part of our public hearing on the budget. So we'll typically publish the manager's recommended book and we will have at, at least two weeks for public inspection before you guys vote on it. So that would give time for those interested to look at the fire districts, the, the tax rate and, and amount it generates. If there's any particulars as far as the nitty-gritty of what they plan on buying this year or things like that, we could always follow up and ask them to expand on, on budget drivers, kind of like what I'll present to you guys.
Maybe if they can get their budgets in as soon as possible, we can publish those on our website and then have them for that meeting. And we don't know in June when we have our public hearing.
There, there's a slight timing error because they base the, the tax rate off of the TR reports that shows the values. And so the tax office won't have those values to, to them, kind of, April 15th is kind of a, a, you know, the, the date that you look at. So we, we can start working with them to where we're the clearinghouse, but it, it should work just fine. They won't have the local meetings if that's your all's choice, but we can at least publish the, the information.
Yeah, that's fine.
There's, there's one other, there's one other component to that that's, because the commissioners require a certain board configuration. Most of these fire departments have incorporated rotating schedules, much like ours, into their board of directors. And that's something that they typically do at their annual meetings. So they're going to have to have an annual meeting at some point to replace the people or whatever they're going to do for this year for that slate of people. So I still think, I mean, even if we do post it and do something here, I still think it needs to be a postponement till this is over with and then the annual meeting, regardless if it's to discuss that or not, the annual meeting still needs to happen because there is business that needs to take place.
You know, either that or just communicate with the folks if there's not going to be more than 50 people there to go ahead and practice the recommended guidelines. Like in this room right here, you could easily put 50 people in here and space them six feet apart. And if somebody exhibits those symptoms, they're not supposed to be here anyway. Kind of self-police the things. I, I don't know that we're completely crippled on, on being able to do business on things like that.
The president just said 10.
Oh, did he? Just revised it to 10?
Yes.
When did, when did that hit?
Just a few minutes ago.
Just a few minutes ago? Well, throw that, throw that comment out to wind.
Yeah, that was a good thought.
I didn't know that. 10 people?
Well, he's, he's not saying.
When did these meetings scheduled occur?
Probably, they probably getting ready.
Soon.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we just at least postpone them till the next meeting?
Yeah.
And then we can see what's going on.
Get a plan.
I still don't understand how this gets resolved in three weeks anyway, but I don't understand a lot of it, but two weeks from now, if we don't have any meetings, then we can.
Might be a little clearer. We might have a little clearer vision in two weeks. We need to vote on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How to suspend the rules?
It's kind of their contract.
But you're saying, you're saying wait two weeks to decide what to do.
Yeah. But if, but, but do they need direction right now not to have a meeting in the next two weeks until we see what's going on?
I think so, but I don't know that, we're going to know a whole lot more in two weeks. I think it's going to get worse, as Patrick said. Get doubling week after week, you know, so.
But, but then we will know to tell them not to do it.
Yeah. We'll know more in two weeks. Just tell them, help, put it on hold for two weeks until we give them further direction? Is that what you're proposing?
If they schedule, if they schedule a meeting and for some reason, but because of the timing, then they can actually adjourn or recess that meeting to a, to a later time and they've met the requirements of, of conducting the meeting on the original notice. For example, if they've already published a, a notice of a meeting, they could convene that meeting with two people and then adjourn it to a, a set time later and then they're, and then they're okay. So that's just a technical thing about nonprofit corporation law for the purposes of the, of the service district law. We have to make sure that that's okay, but I'm virtually positive it is. So they could, if, if, if somebody had a meeting in the next two weeks, they couldn't change it because they've had, they've already published or whatever, then they just meet, adjourn, and. adjourn and put a recess, they don't, to the, to a time certain in the future. And then we could adjust our expectations by waiving or postponing or rejiggering the process if necessary.
I add over to what we said originally.
I think you'd be better off personally if you just suspend it as long as the declaration is in because then we don't have to revisit it every meeting and we don't forget about it.
We may not be here next meeting.
Well, and they're not in limbo about what's going on because they have to notice 10 days before that. So, I mean, it's going to be stretched out beyond the budget process more than likely anyway.
I mean, I have no problem waiting, putting it off if it's a couple, three months and go ahead and do what, what we suggested, what Mr. Bryant suggested, Mr. Morehead, and post that. Mr. Bryant, did you like it?
Yeah, I like.
He's got two last names.
Yeah. I'm trying to be nice. But I have no problem putting it off for a couple of months and letting them go ahead and post those numbers if we want to do that.
Until this thing's over.
Until it's over, right. I can even make a motion for that.
So how do you phrase that?
Okay, so, hey, make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second.
Third. All those in favor? Anybody say aye?
Aye.
Okay, now make your motion.
Now make, now make your motion.
Now make my motion. I would like to make a motion that we put this off, the fire department's annual meeting until, I'm not sure how I want to word that.
You want to allow them to put their meeting off until the emergency declaration's lifted?
That's a good, that's a good way to put it. Put the, put the meeting off, the annual meeting off until the emergency declaration is lifted. Second.
Anybody say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that'll give them some time then. Because we are defeating the purpose that we make to meet. And most of those are, a lot of those folks are elderly that serve on those boards because they have time.
They may not have much time.
We all don't have much time.
That's true. We all don't have much time.
Okay, so is any other constituent concerns? Okay. Okay, I'll move on to administrative agency reports and their first is the recognition of a register of deeds, Sherri Rogers, as one of the top three registrars in the state to receive a certification of achievement from the 2020 Elected Register of Deeds School recently held at the UNC School of Government. Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bit of good news tonight. And I'll, I'll read the note that Charles Zipzak, who taught the class that Sherri attended, said, he said, "To choose the very few recipients of the certificates of achievement, I first had to limit consideration to those who scored extremely high on the exam. From these, I chose papers that had the best combination of frank applicable of lessons drawn from the school of realistic improvements in their offices and unconventional and well-developed proposed solutions to a clearly articulated statewide challenge. There were several participants who were finalists and he had another professor review the essays and there were three in the, in the state, Lee King, Lynn Lewis, and our own Sherri Rogers. It shows commitment to organizational excellence and she scored a perfect 100 on the exam." So thank, big honor.
Sherri, you want to come up? You will say something? I hear you muttering back there.
It seems pretty trivial with everything we've been dealing with tonight, but I will take just a minute to let you know how I do feel so blessed to be in a job that I've been in. I've got almost 27 years and all this and I truly do love my job. I think anybody that knows me know I know that's the truth. And I do work hard to make you guys proud, proud of our registered deeds, but I couldn't do it without the staff I have because I have like the greatest staff, as you know. And like, like I said, this seems trivial tonight, but thank you for taking the time to acknowledge me and thanks again. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sherri. Sherri does a great job. She's really brought the registered deeds, I can, Kirk and I can tell you.
Oh, yeah.
So of how bad things were and how much better they are now and how Sherri's really picking it up. And I remember Sherri when she was just a kid and just starting there and had braces on her teeth and all that stuff. So that was a long, long time ago. I think she started about the time I started surveying in Haywood County and I was in my, I was in my early twenties, I guess. And then surely, I mean, Sherri, she was a teenager, I guess, when she, twenty? Okay. Okay. All right, good. But you appreciate all the work.
Be careful. Be careful.
My wife tells me I gotta watch. All right, so our next order, our next item under the administrative agency reports is the 2020 U.S. Census. And we have a U.S. Census Bureau recruiter, Ben Harden. Welcome, Ben. So you, are you having, I bet you're having to deal with this trying to count people, aren't you?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And thank you very much for having me. I know y'all have a lot on your minds and a lot on your plates. Thanks so much. So, yeah, I'm a recruiter with the United States Census Bureau and I'm here to speak to you not only about the ongoing recruiting effort we have going on in Haywood County as we speak, but also just to give you all some information so you can know what's coming up ahead in terms of the U.S. Census and its effect on Haywood County. So, yes, the goal of the U.S. Census in 2020 is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. And this is hugely important for both our country and our community, Haywood County and the rest of Western Carolina. So two of the hugest reasons that this is important for our community is political representation. This will determine our representation in Congress and other parts of the government for the next decade. In addition to that, and perhaps more pressing for, on the local level, is funding. This is what will determine the funding we receive for our roads, our schools, our hospitals, all of the services that we all use for the next decade. So it's absolutely critical that we can count every single person who lives in our region. We have reason to believe that in the past, Haywood County has been undercounted and that in turn has jeopardized our funding. And this is not just federal funding, this also is what states and local governments use to allocate the money that they direct to places. So we're doing our best. Here's just a map of expected, expected changes in congressional representation as a result of the 2020 Census. North Carolina hopes to pick up a congressional seat, which would be good for all of us. But in order to do that, we do need to make sure that we get an accurate count and count everybody, particularly in Western Carolina. We can be kind of hard to count because, you know, we are scattered throughout sometimes remote locations. It's definitely, it involves a lot of boots on the ground in order to count everyone. So as you can also see here, both North Carolina and Haywood County have historically lagged behind the rest of the country in terms of our self-response rates, which is basically, yeah, folks responding on their own. That in turn means that we do need to have more boots on the ground, more people working as enumerators in order to count people at their homes when they don't respond. Haywood County has caught up to the rest of North Carolina, but we are both still behind our overall goal. So the count has begun. This year, particularly in light of the revelations with coronavirus and whatnot, we are emphasizing everyone, if you can, please respond online. So that makes it easiest for every single person involved in the process, the people who need to be counted, the Census Bureau itself. This will enable us to practice much more social isolation than, than if we are having to send folks to count people manually. So, yeah, anyone can fill out the census. You can actually fill it out now. We are now live. You can go to my2020census.gov. It's extremely easy. It'll take literally less than 10 minutes. So we are just, we are just emphasizing, please, everyone, if possible, fill it out online. We also have phone questionnaire assistance centers, so if anyone has trouble with the, with the questionnaire, they can ask for help. We have English, Spanish, I believe almost 20 other languages, so anyone can get walked through this process very easily. So this is what the census form will look like. It'll be, the return address will be in Jeffersonville, Indiana. It'll have the unique census logo and everyone will receive a unique census ID. So this is a map of update leave areas throughout Western Carolina. These are the areas in beige. These represent people who we cannot mail the census response form to. So in Haywood County, this is actually a large chunk of the county. I believe it's primarily in the Feins Creek and Jonathan's Creek areas. That means that we need to have a lot more manpower in order to get these areas counted because we will have to hand-deliver the census forms to these folks. People's private information is absolutely paramount to us and the protection of it. All of us take a lifetime oath to protect the information that we receive from other people and the Census Bureau itself. We don't share people's private information with other parts of the government. This is just so we can know general statistics about areas so that way we can direct services as necessary. Yeah, so we won't be asking for folks full social security number, money or donations. We're not working with either political party. And, yeah, of course, we're not asking for people's credit card or financial information or anything like that. There are census scams going on and we need to be extra aware of those. So target populations, these are folks that are historically difficult to count and undercounted and particularly pertinent to Haywood County are people living in rural America. Like I said, you know, a lot of this is not super densely populated and in turn requires more manpower in order to count everybody. And again, is part of why we believe that Haywood County has historically been undercounted. This is just about folks counting themselves in the right place, of course. We need people to be counted where they primarily live. When in doubt, the place you live most of the time or where you live on April 1st is what should guide you. So this is my main pitch. Like I said, I'm a recruiter. We are currently at about half of the people we need to staff this operation in Haywood County, which is a matter of concern for us because official census day is April 1st and like I said, we have already allowed people to start responding and we need a whole lot of people to staff this operation here. Our overall target goal of applicants is, I believe, 866 people. I know that sounds like a lot for Haywood County. We, we have a sort of system in place where we have calculated that that's the applicants we need because a certain number of them will not answer the phone when we call them, a certain number of them will drop out during the training process. There's a, there's a substantial amount of erosion. But, yes, we are seeking over 400 more people to apply for these jobs in Haywood County. These are extremely flexible jobs. Folks make their own hours each week. The usual target number of hours is 20 hours a week, so it's super easy to work around or on top of jobs that people already have. We're paying $19 an hour, so this can also represent a substantial amount of money flowing into Haywood County in the form of these jobs. This can also form a pretty good bridge job for people, especially in the service sector and other sectors, who find themselves unable to work during the coronavirus outbreak. I should emphasize too that we are keeping safety as a paramount concern for our employees where, you know, we, we have stuff in place that is going to keep in mind, we're not going to be spreading the coronavirus. And again, the main thing that we want to emphasize is if people can fill out the form online, please do, just so we can avoid as much contact as possible. But again, we are seeking to fill a whole lot of positions in Haywood County and I'm here basically to ask for y'all's help, especially since we will no longer be able to do a whole lot of physical recruiting at this time. We're going to be relying on email lists, social media, other forms of online communication to help get the word out about these jobs. And if, if any of y'all know any way that might be good to reach large groups of people, we would greatly appreciate that. We would very much appreciate that. So job qualifications, folks just need to be 18 years old, have a valid social security number. They don't even need to be a U.S. citizen. If people have a work permit, that's great. So basically, we're just looking for as many people as possible. And it is not super rigorous of a process in order to get aboard. It's an online application. It takes people 30 minutes to fill out. So this is my contact information. Any recruiting questions, please direct people to me. If y'all know anyone who might be interested, if, if y'all have groups of people who you think it might be, it might be good to send out this information to, faith-based groups, fire departments, other community organizations have been very helpful in, in getting the word out to people throughout Haywood County. My colleague Chuck McGowan, he is the main point person for more general information about the census. So if you have any other questions or anything like that that I can't answer right now, he is the man to contact. If y'all have any questions, I can answer them now or I'll be staying after the meeting. So if anyone has, has, again, any other questions, just let me know.
Are you having questions for me?
How does someone count theirself if they live here eight months out of the year and in another state four months out of the year?
If they live here eight months out of the year, they should count themselves here.
Should they fear the fact that they have a driver's license and they file taxes in the state that they live four months and they live here eight months anyway?
No, sir. I know y'all have a lot of people who might be in Florida a lot of the year, here a lot of the year. But no, this is unrelated to the IRS, basically. This is unrelated to, this is unrelated to information that people give to other parts of the government. This is purely for the purposes of directing government funding to places. And in that way, it's absolutely critical that we know where people are spending most of their time, where they're driving on roads the most, where their kids go to school, stuff like that. So that way we can direct funding to where it needs to be.
So congressional seats are directly related to the population. You said we might pick one up in North Carolina?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. North Carolina is projected to pick one up, but again, only if we do this right.
Real close.
Yeah, we're, it's, it's touch or go right now. It could go either way, but we, we hope to pick one up. And that's good for all of us.
And the count does not take into effect that you're a citizen or not, is that correct?
No, sir. Because at the end of the day, regardless of whether people are citizens, they are driving on the roads, they are sending their kids to school, they're using our hospitals. So in that case, it's important that we direct funding to where most people are using services. So that way we don't have a situation where services are dramatically underfunded in relation to the citizen population that is counted there.
I hate to say it, but it would be really nice to have something we could post on Facebook.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
I said, "I hate to say it, but it would be really nice if we could have something we could post on Facebook that we could all share because we really, we get a lot of attention whether we want it or not there."
Hmm?
We get a lot of attention whether we want it or not, so we might as well do it. It's not that progressive.
Well, sir, I do have, I have some great recruiting PDFs. I have recruiting blurbs and scripts that, that can easily go on social media. Like I said, I'll be staying around throughout the whole meeting until the end. If y'all want to get in touch with me, I can send you any of these materials at all. Thank you so much.
One other thing, people got the pre-census a few weeks or months ago.
Mm-hmm.
Will they get another?
Everybody will be getting a, another census form. And again, everybody needs to fill out a new response to the census form in between March 12th and April 1st.
So the other one is just kind of like a tune-up, a trial run?
Yes, sir. I believe, I believe Maine and Western Carolina were selected as the two trial run areas for the census this year.
On page nine, I got one. It was kind of a joke went out of my house, but it took, it took a little more than 30 minutes to fill out.
Well, I can assure you, this one will not be as bad.
Also, on page nine, you know, 10, 15 minutes into it, the question was, "Are you blind?"
"Are you blind?"
And there was no raised indentions on the previous eight pages, so. It was just kind of a joke around my house.
That's a good one. That's a good one. I don't, I don't think that that question will be appearing on, on the official census form, but I could be mistaken.
Thought it was funny that.
That's interesting.
My wife keeps me being deaf a whole lot.
Is he, may he have any other questions? Thanks, man, for coming.
Thank you all very much for your time.
We'll put our heads together and such. I think this is, folks.
I very much appreciate it. And again, I'll be here until after the meeting so we can exchange information.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item of administrative agency reports is Our next item of administrative agency reports is Haywood Pathways Center annual report and update. And I ask, uh, the executive director, Mandy Haidcock Cox to come tonight to give us a report. I was at a meeting and she gave this report and I thought it'd be great for the community to see, uh, kind of what the truth is about pathways. I think we need to get the word out as much as we can, how much it helps people. And I know you had a fundraiser about a month ago that was very successful. There's no way we could have that today.
No, we had good timing.
It was a, it was a lot of people in a small area and it was very well attended. So go ahead, Mandy.
Yeah, that group of, that group of two fifty wouldn't have worked today.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, as Kevin said, my name is Mandy Haidcox. I'm the executive director of Haywood Pathways Center. I've been there for about two and a half years and have, uh, worked within homeless shelters in other areas, Asheville, Raleigh and Durham for the last ten years. Um, I want to thank you as with all the things that are going on today for giving me a few minutes of your time. We have been making a lot of preventative changes at Pathways today too, including moving a lot of furniture and things, so, uh, we're trying to do our best there. We began providing services to Haywood County about five and a half years ago and our mission at the beginning was, the same as it is now, is to feed the hungry, house the homeless and reduce recidivism in Haywood County. We have always done those things, but now we do them at a deeper level, um, than we did five years ago. So I want to share with you just a little bit about where we were and where we have come to. Um, and these are just some highlights for you. When Pathways started, it was very much a community response to an issue, um, and it still is. So we had about fifteen hundred volunteers on that, at that initial flip day when the prison became Pathways. Um, we have now, and on an annual basis, over seven hundred and fifty volunteers from various parts of the community who are coming in to do cook teams, dorm hostesses, driving people, doing classes, Bible studies, all those sorts of things. So it very much remains a place where people can come and, um, be a part of the community. We recently won an award as the state community partner for the North Carolina Comp- Comp- Campus Compact, which is for all of the, uh, uh, universities within North Carolina. They honor one partnership and that was between us and Western Carolina. So, um, up until last week, we were really lucky to have a whole bunch of different departments, um, partnering with us, which has helped us to increase our services. We started as a faith-based organization. We continue to do that. We have been able to, um, to increase the number of people who are helping with us. Uh, we now, one of the things we're most proud of is we have ten onsite chaplains who function a lot like hospital chaplains do. So they are there, they come to dinner, they offer prayer, they, uh, make relationships with folks. Our goal for all of that and for all of our classes, I'll talk about in a second, is because we really want to make sure that people who are staying with us are making those community, positive community connections with others so that when they leave us, regardless of where they are, they have someone positive to connect to and not the negative, um, places that they came from that got them to where, got them to Pathways in the first place. As an employer, we started in twenty fourteen with one employee. We now have sixteen. So we have, uh, quite a few people who are, um, dependent upon us for employment as well. The first part of our mission is to feed the hungry. So when we first started this project, we agreed to take on the, um, dinner meal as offering that in a soup kitchen style for anybody in the community who needed a dinner meal. We continue to do that. When we first opened, we served probably twenty-five meals a night. Um, and now we are serving between eighty and a hundred meals per night. With all of that increase in feeding folks, our annual food cost is below two thousand dollars because of our community partnerships with Manah and Publix. We have enough food that we're able to share then and, and trade with the other nonprofit agencies that do food services as well. We are also able, because of that, to promote our, the sustainability of our program graduates and do food boxes for them on the fourth, uh, Friday of each month. That also allowed us to, well, we needed to have a kitchen coordinator who is there. We have thirty-five cook teams. That's the bulk of our volunteers in the community who come and make dinner and serve it to those folks. A lot of them have been there the entire five years. The second part of our mission is to house the homeless. So when we started, we were simply a shelter. We provided a safe place to sleep. Here's some food. You leave for the day, you come back. Um, we didn't have any kind of case management or program. People were out during the day. We housed maybe ten to twelve people a night. In the last five and a half years, we've grown our programs, which I'll talk about in a second. Um, and we have been able, because of that and because of the need, we now have about seventy-five to ninety people a night. That means we have thirty-two beds in our men's dorm, twenty-eight in the women's. And we opened a, our shelter for moms with kids at the end of June last year. And that houses up to ten moms with up to twenty-six kids. So it's a total of ninety-six beds. What is most important to, in a lot of conversations about Pathways and homelessness is that ninety-six percent of the people who stay with us are from Haywood County. When we began five years ago, we, like I said, we did not have a case manager or any kind of program in place. Two and a half years ago, we were able to, um, hire our first case manager who has ten years of experience as well. And we started a holistic and very person-centered, um, case management program. So everyone has the same template, but they all make their own goals based on what it is that they need to work on to get to self-sufficiency. So people can stay with us in the program for up to six months and work on these goals. We focus on income because you have to have that to be able to function. You have to have housing. And then we look at what is your stability? So what is your physical health, uh, mental health and sobriety look like? Because if those are going to fall apart, you're probably not going to be able to maintain the first two. We look at life skill development and we bring in various classes into our, um, program. So we have, uh, financial management one-on-one, renting one-on-one, Bible studies, art classes, parenting, cooking and nutrition and, and a couple of other things, um, all of which are volunteer-led. So those are, are what we're offering as well. Then we also look at, uh, social support because most people come to us, by the time they get to us, they've burned all their bridges. So how do we find positive social support within the community to, to continue to lift them up? And then we look at spirituality. One of the other things we were able to do is, uh, two years ago, a year and a half ago, we were able to hire an employment specialist. This has allowed our number of employed at Pathways to double because he is, he concentrates just on this piece. And so we've gone from, you know, whereas before two thousand eighteen, we had about a third of our folks employed, now we have over half are employed. And of those folks who are employed, eighty percent are working full-time at an average wage of about eleven dollars an hour. Now seventy percent of the people who stay with us have a monthly stable income. If it's not from employment, then it's from something like social security or, um, disability, something like that. That other piece of people who have no income, that usually constitutes those folks who have just come to us, who are looking for work, or those folks who are disabled without benefits, that we're trying to help them get those. The third part of our mission was, I don't, where is it? Um, to reduce recidivism in Haywood County. Um, so we've always had an informal relationship with the sheriff's department and with law enforcement to, you know, when people are released, part of the whole goal of this, right, was when people were released to be able to have a safe place for them to go, to reintegrate back into, to the community. And so, um, when we started, we had a very informal relationship with the, um, sheriff's department and we did what we could. In two thousand eighteen, we were able to, um, hire two peer support specialists who work for Pathways but are, are located within the jail. Their office is in booking. And what they do is they work with folks who come in and as they are first, if they are first-time offenders or if their, their, um, offenses are clearly cyclical and, and due largely to mental health and substance use, what they're able to do is to help folks, um, while they're there, move in a different direction. So when they get to their release date, they're going to somewhere safe, whether that be, um, some sort of treatment center or housing or something. What's important, I think, to highlight is that in two thousand eighteen, uh, we just don't have the numbers yet for two thousand nineteen, but in two thousand eighteen, of the, of the women who, and of the women who left jail and came and completed the Pathways program, seventy-five percent of them have not returned to jail. Fifty-two percent of the men who came from jail to us have not returned to jail. Um, and then in two thousand nineteen, our peer support specialist served two hundred and ninety of the inmates. And of those, of that number, ninety percent of those who exited left engaged in some sort of recovery support. So many of them were taken directly by our peer supports to inpatient treatment. And then a lot of, the rest of them were connected to supports. So that is a very brief overview and fast overview. Um, one thing that is important for us to highlight is that we continue to do all of this and, and want to do all of this, uh, at a very cost-effective rate, we feel, of twenty dollars per person per night. And that includes shelter, three meals, case management support, employment support, laundry and shower. And that, when you compare that to with a cost per night at the jail, which is around seventy-eight dollars a night, or doing hotel stays, which we used to do and a lot of rural counties still have to do, you're looking at sixty dollars a night and that doesn't include things like food or any of those support services. Um, so we're really trying to get the most bang for our buck and, and provide the best services that we can. So a lot has changed over the past five years, but, uh, what we really, what has stayed the same is that our intention is to provide for those basic needs, but then also help people move and transform to a different space so that they're no longer on the street, that they're people who are part of our community. Thank you for your time if you have questions.
Are you having questions for me?
I have a couple of questions. The definition of a resident? A lot of people are concerned and I know you see social media as well as everyone else.
Sure.
What sets the residency?
What?
What sets the residency? Is it driver's license or do they just have to tell you they've been here?
It can be a variety of things. So if, a lot of people do have an ID or driver's license. So that's where we start. Um, we look, if they don't have that, we will send them to the sheriff's department to find out if they have any warrants. And a lot of times they'll be able to tell us, are you a resident or not of this county? So there's that. A lot of people can show that they have medical bills or they've gotten mail somewhere. Uh, we look at all of those different things to see if someone has been in Haywood County for a substantial period of time to make them a resident.
Okay. Uh, last question. During the day, whenever they're supposed to be working, uh, they're not allowed to stay at the facility? Is it? I'm familiar with one in Greenville, Salvation Army, and the way they did it when I worked down there years ago was eight o'clock in the morning, these people were kicked out on the street and it was their responsibility to go get work or something along those lines. Is there anything like that in place?
Well, I should have mentioned this. One of the things that's different than it was in the, at the beginning is that a year and a half ago, because when we, when we employed the employment specialist, we were able to keep our campus open twenty-four seven. So now people do not have to leave at all. They can stay there if they need to. And we generally have between ten and fifteen people there during the day. And those are those people who are looking for work and who are, um, disabled and can't go anywhere anyway.
Okay. Thank you for your contribution.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment too. A lot of the, a lot of the negativity that we hear is, are mostly people that aren't there, the homeless people that aren't at Pathways. Pathways gets blamed for stuff that they don't do. If anything, they're helping people. Um, and they have some great success stories. I'd hope, I'd hope that some of those could.
She was going to and then didn't want to get a virus. She practiced and everything.
Yeah, okay, that's good. But it's, it's remarkable, some of the stories, uh, because of the people that come there that get help and then they move on with their lives. And that's what, uh, that's what Pathways fixes, if you will, is really helping the people that, that come in. And, and the people that are causing the trouble that you see on the streets aren't from Pathways. They just, I'm not sure why they're here, but anyway, nevertheless, they're here and they don't qualify to go to Pathways. But Pathways basically has programs to help them get going and it basically gets their feet back on where they can get back out into the community and be a positive influence. And that's what, that's what we see and, uh, and I think the community, uh, is, based on your empty bowl, I guess, supper that you had the other night, was, was hugely supporting that. I know I had gone and it, you, I, you couldn't really even find a place to sit down. It was so, it was such a good, a good fundraiser. So I know the community's still out there and just, I wish people would listen to what Pathways does and not listen to some of the negativity that they see and, and hear about because they are making a difference. And there's a, a lot of the people that are helping and it's a lot of families, you know, and you don't hear from them because they get on with their lives and they, and they're doing the things in the community that they should be doing. And this just kind of gets them a little bit of a help up to do that, so. But I appreciate everything that y'all, that y'all do and everything, so. And, and I know Lee's here. Did you want to say anything, Lee? Is this, okay, all right.
I'd also like to thank you for the job you do.
Thank you.
Couple of things stuck out on your presentation, the seventy-five percent for females as far as being able to help them or there's not a repeat. And then the, the males are fifty-two percent, but, you know, that's tremendous. You know, you help people and they, they respond. And also the organizations that gave food, uh, your, your yearly cost was two thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, we, our annual, our food cost last year was eighteen hundred dollars and we fed, we served forty, over forty-six thousand meal.
That's, that's just tremendous. And those, those people will be commended for the job they do also. Well, I know people that volunteer up there and, you know, you, uh, hats off to those peoples trying to make a difference in people's lives.
You mentioned a recidivism rate. By having such a high rate like that, that's really saved us from having that on to the, the jail, you know, before now. I mean, we're looking at it now, but, uh, that's saved us quite a bit of money over the last several years, so.
Really has.
I think it's a job well done.
Thanks.
Yeah, well, yeah, for the people that, that like to pick on Pathways, they, if Pathways wasn't there and the sheriff, uh, chief deputy's back there and he's shaking his head, if, if they, if we didn't have Pathways, it would be costing the taxpayers a lot more money because we'd have a lot bigger jail and you'd have a lot more problems out there. And the big thing is, is we wouldn't be helping people to change their lives around. And that's the most important thing. We've helped people change their lives around and get back out into society doing those positive things. And it's not, and especially when you're helping families, those, that way the families get back on their feet and they can get going again. And they're not like a, it's not like a vicious circle. We kind of stopped that vicious circle.
Yeah, I mean, that's our whole goal. And, you know, we have, like, for example, we have one mom who has a five-year-old, three-year-old and twin ten-month-olds in the shelter. And, you know, without, without some sort of intervention at this point, her kids have such a much higher chance of just repeating that cycle. So our goal is to be able to help her get stable so they have a different future.
Right, yeah. And not be productive.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
I, I, I just had, you know, you all had made a couple of comments and, and believe me, I think Pathways is a good thing, but I, and you, then you said you're not sure where you think the homeless people are coming from. But unfortunately, I do believe that it is a good thing and it gets out there in the community and gets, and it gets around on social media. And so people find out about this place. And, and then they get the wrong information that this is a place that they can go to. And then they come here and they go there and then they can't stay there because they have their substance abusers or, uh, you know, they're under the influence at the time. And so then they're turned away. And when they're turned away, they're turned away out in the community. So Pathways in itself is, is a good thing and it's not your fault necessarily that those people are coming here, but if, the, the answer to that question is that, that there is that role in it. And, and so I don't know what to do about it and Jeff could probably answer to that and so could the Wayne'sville Police Department as well. So I, I, I hope that that's something when we, when you put out what Pathways is about, that we say, hey, when we emphasize, do not come here. If you think you're going to come here and stay and you've got a substance abuse issue or you're on drugs or you're under the influence at the time, you are not going to stay here. Because I think that's the big complaint in the, in the community.
Sure.
And, and I don't think that's Pathways' fault. I'm not trying to blame that on Pathways, but I don't want us to not, to, I don't want to avoid the, the issue that we're dealing with, that we have to deal with in, in the town.
Well, and we've heard that and we've tried to, you know, as much as we can, I appreciate you saying that, saying that, um, as much as we can be really clear, but like on our webpage and all these sorts of things about what are the eligibility requirements. We have people call all the time from Tennessee, Ohio, and, I mean, at one point, everyone apparently was leaving Ohio. And we just really said, don't come here, don't relocate here because we don't have anything for you. Um, and then we partnered, um, with a couple of other agencies that if some, like we had somebody last week who was driving from Tennessee, their car broke down. last week who was driving from Tennessee, their car broke down. They don't really want to resettle here, but how can we help them get to where they are? So they'll stay for a couple of days and then we'll move them on.
Right. And I don't think that's, and it's not just the fact that Pathway, I think that there's, I think some surrounding counties have probably taken advantage of that. And I don't think they should have done that, but I think they have. And I think as long as you guys are anticipating that, you're dealing with that, and, and as long as the community as a whole is trying to deal with that, to make this a place, I mean, I, I'm not saying it shouldn't be a place for one, one person that comes from another state that needs something, but I don't, I, I think it's a place developed for first to help the people of Haywood County as opposed to people who aren't from Haywood County.
Absolutely.
It was, it definitely was. As always, you know, when you try to do good, there's always some bad, I guess. But overall, the good's a lot better because we are helping people. And I think the lady that got here in public comment talking about mental health, that's a lot of it. They keep cutting mental health, the governments have, and it's just, it's come to a process, really, so.
Yeah.
And everybody's struggling with that. Anyway, I do appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any more comments?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Mandy, and keep up the good work. Thanks, Lee. Okay, and then our next order of business is our adjustment, discussion adjustment to the agenda. And I want to add, under item five, would be a request, approval of a budget amendment for public safety emergency management. We want to add twenty-five thousand dollars to appropriate an item to cover some of the initial costs related to this COVID-nineteen. So that'll be under, that'll be number five under the regular business, right? Okay. So it'll be number five under regular business. We'll add that on there, so. And it'll be taken out of contingency. Okay, the next order of business. Does anybody have any other discussion or adjustment of the agenda? Okay, so we'll move to our consent agenda. And the first item is to request approval of the March second, twenty-twenty regular meeting minutes. Next is to request approval of a resolution of the Board of Commit, County Commissioners of the County of Haywood, North Carolina, authorizing the issuance of a general obligation refunding bond, series twenty-twenty. And that'll be under attachment three. The third item of the consent agenda is to request approval of the lowest estimate for replacement of a roof on the agricultural center building by, I guess, Cervantes, Cervantes Roofing in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars to be paid from budgeted funds for this fiscal year. That's under attachment four. And then the fourth item of the consent agenda is two budget amendments. One is from the General Fund Economic Development from the North Carolina Extension Office, seventy-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars to appropriate the revenue received for the 4H and the family council, family consumer science programs, attachment five. And then that is, next is the General Fund Public Safety, Sheriff's Office, thirty-four-hundred-and-eighty dollars to appropriate the distributions made to the Sheriff's Office for the purchase of two cameras for the Criminal Investigation Division. That's under attachment six. Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda?
Were you going to add that up?
That was going to be in the regular agenda.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, we'll talk about that. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, that's, you know. Okay, the, we'll move on to the next order of business is a regular agenda, and we'll request approval of the February twenty-twenty refunds, releases, amendments and discoveries. And we have our tax assessor Judy Higgin here tonight to do that. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm requesting approval of the February twenty-twenty releases, refunds, amendments and discoveries. In refunds for motor vehicles, we had seventy dollars and fifty-one cents releases. There were four thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty dollars and sixty-six cents. And in discoveries, we had eleven thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and one cent.
That, that, everything was pretty normal, I guess.
It is.
Anybody have any questions for Judy? Here none, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the February twenty-twenty refunds, releases, amendments and discoveries.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Anybody in the committee saying aye?
Uh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy, thanks for being here. Our next order, our next item in the regular agenda is to request approval of the February twenty-twenty tax collections, updates and refunds. We have our tax collector Greg West here tonight. Greg, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, we'd like to request approval of the February twenty-twenty tax collections, updates and refunds. As of February twenty-ninth, we were at ninety-four-point-five percent collected for an amount of thirty-seven million, seven-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. We have a remaining balance on the two thousand nineteen of two million, two-hundred-and-seven thousand, seven-twenty-eight. As of today, we are actually at ninety-five-point-two percent. So we're still on track for budget and so forth. Refunds, business as usual, a lot of landfill fees removed off that this time and people turning in information so they could get that released. I'd like to say we, we are advertising in the Mountaineer on March twenty-fifth, the last day to pay without your name getting in the paper is going to be March the twentieth. Also, you know, we're certainly aware of this Corona thing, and if people are a little concerned about coming into our office, they certainly can go to our website, pay the taxes online. They also can use our one-eight-seven-seven-seven-two-nine-eight-two-nine-zero number, pay by that way as well, and certainly pay by check in the mail or money order. I think main thing is we, people will communicate with the office, you know, during this time, and we'll continue with our payment plans and things like that to make sure that, you know, we're doing the right thing. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Greg, if there is a fee, ain't there, for paying online? You have, you have to pay a fee, a third-party fee?
Yes, there is a three percent fee that goes to the, the credit card companies. That is not money that the tax department gets.
Is that the same if you call in as well?
Yes, it is.
So really mailing in by check would be the best way to.
Be the best, absolutely. And let's mail it to our, the two-fifteen North Main Street, suite two-two-four, instead of the Charlotte address that's on the tax bill. That way we get it sooner and, you know, there's no discrepancies there. You know, we, people that'll be on the payment plans, I mean, you can still be current on your payment plan. It's unfortunate that you still would be considered past due, so you would be advertised in the paper. That's a question that we get a lot as well. We're still encouraging everyone sign up for senior citizen exemptions and things. They have until June first, I believe, to get that paperwork filled out, so.
Greg, do the collection percentages that you show annually, do they change if delinquent taxes are paid? For example, two thousand seventeen on your first chart, two thousand seventeen, somebody comes in and we collect the two thousand seventeen tax. Will it change the percentage as far as the annual collection percentage on the next chart or not?
It will not change it for the nineteenth, you know.
I guess what I'm saying, does it go back in time to two thousand seventeen and say, say you got a ninety-three-point-nine-six percent and then you collected half of what is delinquent? Does it show, would the two thousand seventeen percentage change from ninety-three to ninety-four at that point in time? Or does that figure stop at some point? I mean, does the ni, does the percentage for that year stop at some point?
I think it stops in, at June thirtieth, at the end of the fiscal.
So if you just collect delinquent, it just goes on, we're collecting delinquent. It doesn't add to the percentage of collection for that year.
That's correct.
So that, when it, whatever that year ends, collection, that's the percentage that that, that person had or that, that tax office had for that year?
That's correct.
Okay. And then if that's not correct, you find out later, it's no big deal. I just kind of wanted to know.
Yep.
That's probably not a question you were looking to answer.
That makes sense. I mean, it'd only be collected in nineteen and not actually seventeen, for example. So the percentage would be higher in nineteen instead of seventeen.
Right. I mean, you can see on our, on the page two of the report that, for example, two thousand seventeen, at the beginning of, or at the end of June, our, the balance was like four-hundred-and-two-thousand. And we've collected two-hundred-and-twenty thousand of that this year. So that's like fifty-five percent for that delinquent year, seventeen. And for eighteen was nine-hundred thousand, and we've collected over five, almost five-fifty of that for, around sixty percent. If that makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, that all makes sense. I'm not sure if that answered my question, but that makes sense. It's okay.
I'll check with, back with you.
It's all right.
Okay.
Do I have any other questions for Greg? I'll entertain a motion that we approve the February twenty-twenty tax collector, collections, updates and refunds. Second.
Second.
And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And the third item of the regular agenda is to request approval of an agreement between Lake Junaleska Assembly and the Sheriff's Office, requesting the Sheriff's Office to provide nighttime security, Sunday through Friday, and twenty-four hour coverage on Saturdays for the grounds of Lake Junaleska. The cost is to be paid from budgeted funds for this fiscal year, then reimbursed on a monthly billing cycle by Lake Junaleska Assembly. We have our chief deputy, Jeff Haynes. Welcome, Jeff.
Good evening, Commissioners. What this is, is a, a, another iteration after being negotiated out, an ongoing contract we've had with Lake Junaleska Assembly for quite some time to provide different levels of security. This particular one changes the schedule, I guess is the easiest way to say that, and, and moves it to a Sunday through Friday, six P.M. to six A.M. coverage, and then a full twenty-four hour service coverage on Saturdays. The, the, the daytimes during the week will be provided by, by unarmed security that's provided by Junaleska, the Assembly themselves. That's really the only change in this, and it is a continuing, ongoing contract, an agreement that we've had for quite some time.
Anybody got any questions?
Chief, is this, so you're saying there's no changes in what we've been doing in the past?
The, the, the pay rate has increased a bit as far as what the Assembly is going to be paying back, but it's fully reimbursable back to the county. At the end, it'll be billed back on a monthly basis. And the only difference is the, is the hours of service. We've moved to change it to a nighttime service, where in the past it's been, it's been acted upon a little bit differently. We've provided more service. We've actually backed away from more of the armed service and we've, they're, they're moving more toward unarmed during the business hours during the day.
Anybody have any other questions? Yeah, I'll request approval of this agreement then.
So, you want me to just move to do it?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the agreement between Lake Junaleska Assembly and Sheriff's Offices presented by Chief Deputy Haynes.
Second. Good Tracy. What is in favor, indicate by saying aye. Okay, anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, the fourth item is to request approval to replace the outbound scale of the Haywood County Material Recovery Facility based on the lowest bid received from Braswell Scale Company, an amount of eighty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars to be paid from solid waste contingency funds. We have our solid waste environmental coordinator, Randy Sisker. Welcome, Randy.
Good evening, gentlemen. I am the solid waste environmental coordinator, and I went out to get some estimates for the scales back in October. North Carolina Agri, Department of Agriculture, they inspected our scales and informed us that the scales were at the end or nearing the end of their functioning life. So, you know, we started making a few phone calls at that point in time. In December, the scales actually froze up. They malfunctioned and we had to call Braswell in. They had some difficulty finding a replacement part, the load cell itself, due to the age of the scales. We were able to get the, the scale back in operation within a week. Fortunately, they found the proper part. At that point in time, we looked at possibly refurbishing the scales that are in place or replacement. And the refurbishment cost was almost as much as the replacement of the scales. But due to the age of the scales, they would not warranty the work. So I was instructed to go and check out, get some bids, and Braswell and Asheville, who, they typically take care of any of our scale problems, and they installed scales two years ago on the inbound side, did a really good job there. Excuse me. They came in with the lowest bid, and it was lower by approximately twenty-two thousand dollars. We wanted to move forward with this due to, we know it's just a matter of time. We don't know when it'll happen, but we wanted to try to take care of the scale before our heavy usage starts in June. Of course, that may change. This was not a budgeted item, so that's why we're having to get, go to the contingency fund. Do you have any questions?
You say they, Braswell Scale, they, they replaced the unit on the inbound side last year.
Two years ago.
Two years ago. And will this be like almost a direct replacement as far as comparing apples to apples, your outbound will almost be the same as what they installed two years ago?
It's just about the price, is that, was that your question? I'm sorry.
Well, actually, actually, the, the outbound scale, will it almost be the same scale as the inbound scale that they put in?
Almost. They're going to have to modify it slightly because the outbound scale is what we call a pit scale, which it was designed in a pit, concrete pit. They're going to have to rework some of that concrete work. The inbound scale, we were able to slightly modify, turn, make it an easier access to the facility, but due to the footprint of the scale house and the current scales, we couldn't do any modification there. So it's going to go exactly back into the same footprint that the current scales occupy.
Well, as far as maintenance goes, Braswell Scale's local, they're already doing it and.
Yes, sir. This is, this will be the same, it'll be compatible because it's basically the same thing as the other scale. These scales are, they were installed in, I believe, ninety-three, ninety-four, so they, we've almost got thirty years of functional life out of them.
And a lot of, a lot of traffic went over that in that period of time.
Yes, sir.
Is that the normal expectancy, thirty years or?
Uh, well, warranty is five years. Well, some extended warranty items up to ten years, but warranty's about ten years, so.
Pretty cute.
One of the reasons this scale may have come to its end a little sooner than usual was it is a pit scale, and when there's pit scales, we have moisture, dirt, corrosion issues, that kind of thing.
And I noticed the other bid, it would have been a pretty good, pretty good undertaking as far as the mechanically engineered and part of it. Looked like it was a very heavy-duty scale, several thousand pounds more capacity, but I don't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need something like that.
No, it's going to be replaced. Right now, it's a concrete reinforced deck. The current plan is to use a metal scale, just basically almost the same as the one on the inbound side.
So, I need, I need two, two separate motions. Okay. So I'll entertain a motion that we request approval to replace the outbound scale.
I'm making motion to replace the outbound scale as presented.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then next is the budget amendment. So I'll, I request approval of a budget amendment from the Special Revenue Fund Solid Waste Management Equipment, eighty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars to cover the cost of the replacement of the outbound scale at the County Material Recovery Facility. And I will say this is coming out of the solid waste fund contingency, and that contingency's still really healthy. I think, I think there's still a hundred and ninety-three thousand?
Yeah, it's, it's going to have a hundred and ninety-three thousand balance afterward finished. We, I don't think we've touched it this year yet. It was two-hundred-and-eighty thousand to start with.
Right, so I noticed that, so.
Good.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to, for the budget amendment.
So moved.
Second. Brandon, second? Brandon, second. Okay, is there any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Animals, thank you, Randy.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Okay, then this is the fifth item will be what I had added, and this is, this is the request approval of a budget amendment for public safety emergency management. This is $25,000 to appropriate amount to cover some additional costs related to the COVID-19 emergency efforts if needed. And Julie, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I'll be glad to. Since you declared the state of emergency to help free up some of those funds, we've decided to put $25,000 into the budget in order to have a place to where we can pay for some of these things. We do expect eventually to have the money come back from state and the federal government, but for now, we're taking it from contingency because we don't, we don't know exactly what that's going to be. So, this is hitting contingency in the general fund for 25,000.
And that contingency is in pretty, pretty good shape too, I noticed, so.
Yes, there's still 216,000 left there, and I think we started with 300,000, so we're in good shape still.
I wanted to comment on that. There was two contingencies, and those, they both look really good. It's not like we're bottoming out on them, so that's good. Okay, so, does anybody have any other, any discussion on that?
I've got a question or two on it. We don't know of any current expenses. This is just for later.
Right.
At this time, we've spent some money on staff time, some overtime. We placed an order today for some laptops so we could roll those out for teleworking situations, but we also don't have any extra funds should we need part-time help or anything like that. So, this is more or less taking it from contingency and putting it in our pot that we can access if something pops up between now and the next Commissioner meeting.
I think Chris had some cleaning supplies that he had to order.
That's correct. We've had some cleaning supplies.
Because we're cleaning a lot more.
Right.
And we're having to have people clean a lot more.
So, you've not seen a need yet to buy protective equipment like the PPE that EMS wears? You've not gotten to that point?
Not to that point, and I think some of it's just not available. We've tried, especially like masks, the N95 masks that the Health Department would use, things like that are pretty scarce.
I think we ought to designate this a Michael Graham motion.
Do what?
The Michael Graham motion, I think we ought to designate this as Michael Graham motion.
I don't know what that means.
Isn't that our public comment person, anybody public comment?
Oh, Mike Graham, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the Michael Graham motion as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that okay, Tracy? Okay.
I think it's okay. He made public comment, and he's concerned and we're doing something a little about it. I mean, immediately.
Okay.
You added it to the agenda. I mean, what?
I didn't add that. Okay, Tracy says no. So, I'll request approval of a budget amendment for public safety emergency.
Tracy's not a county commissioner. Tracy's not a county commissioner.
But I am, and I'm the chair. For $25,000 to appropriate amount to cover some initial costs related to COVID-19 emergency efforts if needed. And Kirk, you are really a Republican. I just want you to know that.
No, I'm for it.
Okay.
I'm not really a Republican. Really, that's worse than what I just said a minute ago. Now, I might have to leave because I just coughed because Frank said I couldn't stay here.
So, zeros. Can I have that motion?
I'll second it. How about that?
No, I, no, I didn't make the motion. I asked.
I'll make a motion. Now, I'll second his motion.
Kirk's second it. Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye. And Tommy's sitting down there taking their temperature with his infrared laser. Are we okay, Tommy? Because I think Kirk's lost.
Your coal's cucumber.
Then, is that good, Tracy? Okay.
I guess the question is, is 25, is that enough?
Yeah.
I mean, for now.
It's enough for two weeks anyway.
Yeah.
Maybe.
That's what we want to do.
Kevin might have to call a special meeting between then if it's not. It may not be. I don't know what's going to happen.
Good. Okay. But we think that'll get us through to the next meeting, and then if we need more, we can do that. So, if I need a special meeting, I'll call it, Kirk.
You know, on a serious note, I think with the flu problems we had a couple of months ago, I think our community as a whole, we've talked about this. You know, they've practiced good personal hygiene, washing hands frequently. You know, we've been down this road, so if there's a silver lining around that flu problem we had a couple of months ago, it may be that our, our people are more geared toward, you know, following some of these guidelines that we've been given again, you know, same, same drill. So, you know, maybe that'll help us because people are already aware of it.
We don't have as many millennials either.
No.
They're the ones that aren't really responding well.
That's true. But I do feel like when we had that, that when we had that, we had a good response to the Health Department for flu shots and everything. Frank's over there cutting up. All right, I'm going to move on to, the next order of business is appointments, and I'm going to turn it over to the County Manager to request approval of the following appointments to the Watershed Review Board, and that's under Attachment 12, so it's, I'll let you take it off.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's Tommy Thomas. He would represent Waynesville Watershed Area, Stephen Taylor representing Maggie Valley, and Hubert Edward Salem representing Maggie Valley. I will say, Mr. Thomas actually teaches Fly Fishing Fridays, Forest Through Parks and Rec, and he is also a hokey, so excellent appointees all the way around.
Do I need to do these individually?
Together or individual?
Altogether.
Let's ask Tracy.
I did ask her, and she said it was okay.
Okay.
She's not a Commissioner though, okay? But you went over all these? Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion that we approve Tommy, Thomas, Stephen, Taylor, and Hubert Edward Salem to the Watershed Review Board.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, our next order of business is closed sessions, and we do not have any. Next order of business is our adjournment. Does anybody have anything further for the board? Oh, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Webb during the meeting has changed some of the COVID-19 website, and maybe he can come up and talk about how people can subscribe to a notification system.
Actually, during the meeting, make some changes to the website. We had started a page for the updates over the weekend and had six or seven updates already posted. We have posted an additional three or four items tonight and set up a, an area where you can subscribe by text message or by email for alerts anytime we post news. We have had 15 subscribers just since we started the meeting, so people are seeing that. They're taking advantage of that. Just wanted to get an opportunity to let people know that they can sign up and get those updates by text or by email.
Thank you, Joey.
Joey, if they, so you're saying once there's an update, it'll automatically send them a text?
Yes, we do have a similar functionality now on several parts of the website, like our bid postings, our job posting, some of those, but we've got that functionality on the COVID-19 page. So, they, as soon as we post an update, they'll get a text message or an email that'll tell them what the update was and give them a link to that article.
Okay, good.
Thanks, Joey. Appreciate that. That's just another way then that people stay informed. Up to you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I've got one more thing, Mr. Chairman. I was approached several weeks ago, and I spoke to our tax folks, and I think I spoke individually with a couple of Commissioners on the possibility of looking at waiving some property tax, taxes for a ministry group that we have here in the community. I learned today of how many tons of stuff, food, clothing, different things that some needy people need in our community, and I just wanted to see what the feeling is of the board of possibly looking at waiving this. I understand from talking with our tax folks, they can't do nothing about it, but as Commissioners, if we make a decision to do that, that we can. So, just wanted to get the feeling of the board to see how they felt about that.
I think they, I think they do, they deliver food.
They deliver food. It's a ministry, not only do they deliver the food, I think that they're set up more for folks to come to them, and I was unaware of the magnitude that they have in the community. What had happened is a transfer in the property which caused these needed taxes to be paid, and they have, or I understand that they filled out an exemption which they didn't know that they needed to do before. So, I've considered waiving those, those taxes myself, and I know that we may have others that have been in the same position in the past. I know of one, and I'm okay with refunding them those fees if we can, and also waiving these. So, I wanted to get the feelings of the board, like I said.
I think if they'd have filled out the paperwork and had when there was a deadline on it, they would already receive the exemption. So, I think they're qualified for it. Just because they messed up a little bit doesn't mean we shouldn't give it to them.
I want to clarify, they did, there was a mailing that went out to them, but they, they claimed they never received it. Whether they did or not, I'm not sure, but they claimed they never received the exemption form once the transfer had taken place. So, we really don't know whether they got it or not, but, but I do know that afterwards, you know, it was brought to my attention that we needed to consider waiving those, so.
I just, you know, I've always been big on precedent in what we've done for people in the past, and I just want to make sure that whatever they're asking for, and I want to be clear about what they're asking for, what we have done for folks in the past that, that had the same problem, same issue, because I don't want to have not waived it in the past and then waived it for this particular group because I think it's showing some preference, and as a board, I don't want to establish that. So, I mean, if we don't, it's not on the, it's not on the calendar, it's not on our agenda today to do, so we couldn't really handle it today. If we could get that checked out and we could see that, you know, possibly what's happened in the past, I would feel a little bit better about whether to approve it or not, or whether I show, would support it or not. Heck, I'm just one vote of five.
Yeah, I guess I'm okay with that as well. The only thing that I was trying to keep from happening is having their name in the paper, which if the 20th, I think, is the deadline, just trying to take care of that beforehand, so.
Well, I, I think I share Kirk's concerns. You guys have been on the Board of Commissioners a few terms. Do you have any, I mean, I would defer to your past experience. Do you have any memory of situations like this, any precedent that's been set by the county?
I don't recall ever waiving it once it got to that point, but I don't.
There's a statutory matter that has to be considered about this. We'll have to look at that. They, it happens all the time, by the way. There's a transfer from.
What happens all the time, the waiving or?
What happens all the time is that you have an exempt use. For example, the most common one is a church that has property that's being used as a parsonage, and then, and so that's exempt, and then they'll sell it, and in the year following, I'm sorry, this is backwards from your example. Your example is, it was not exempt.
No, no, it was exempt. It was just in a different name. The property chan, wait, let me, let me back up. The property was in a different name, and the property was sold. The ministry stayed there in the same building. So, the property changed hands, so the property's now owned by somebody else, but the ministry's still the same.
Well, the, so they lost.
It still stayed, Frank, it's, I think what could differentiate this is that an exempt bought, an exempt bought an exempt but didn't file the exemption on time.
There you go.
In the new year.
There you go.
In the new name.
In the new name. Okay. Again, there's a statutory procedure for, for, for the possibility, for the possibility of, of, of granting a late application for exemption. Okay, what you have to do is there has to be a filed late application for exemption, and that's the only circumstance. Allowing that late application for exemption that allows you to go back to January 1 in that exemption, in that application year. Okay, that's the only way that you can handle it. You've got no hope on the, on the big and in the newspaper. It's going to be in the newspaper because you're going to have to get the application, have it recognized by the tax assessor, and then they kick it up to you all for, for that decision. That, we, I've had it, it happens all the time. It's, it, it, it comes to you guys very seldom, but it happens. We can, we can look into it before the next meeting and come, come with the, with what your procedure is exactly.
I think one thing that could differentiate it as far as what we've done in the past is rarely, I haven't done too many closings where it's been exempt to exempt, whereas usually it's church to non-exempt or non-exempt to church, and then church fails to file it, where this is exempt to exempt. So, it may give us, when we get to the point that we can approve it, if it has to go through the process that you say, it gives us something to say, okay, well, this is a little bit different than something we've faced in the past.
Well, if we have a vehicle, if we have a vehicle to get the people to the point to where they need to be, then we can act on it.
Yeah, as long as we know we're going to, if, if anyone else comes before the board, of course, heck, I mean, this might be it for me, but if anyone comes before the board in the future that has that same type of situation, they're going to look back and say, hey, you did it for these folks. And we need to make sure that we do that for them then and that we haven't denied other folks in this exact situation in the past.
I totally agree. You know, I don't want to look like I'm trying to show favoritism for anybody. If this was bringing to my attention the first day I was elected, I'd have brought it up. You know, I think anybody that's in the ministry business, I want to help them all we can, and I have no problem supporting anybody. If somebody comes up and says, hey, you missed me last year, year before, similar situation, I have no problem. 10 years down the road, no problem. I want to support our, our.
Yeah, I agree totally. I agree totally. I think it's just a formality, what I'm hearing, right? Just a formality to get there.
No. We have to, we have to comply with the statute, and it may or may not be a formality. We'll see.
Yeah, and that's totally all right with me too. You know, I definitely want to follow any laws or statutory laws that we have, so I'm okay with that. I was just trying to keep it out of the paper.
Okay. We'll look into that. Okay, is anybody else, anything else?
Actually, I mean, I don't want to hold this meeting too long, but when I was asking those questions of Patrick, I was looking around, and I was like, okay, so, you know, why is this thing different? And I found, I found something pretty short and concise about, and, and about why this coronavirus is different. And this is, that's the question. Why is this coronavirus different? It says, there are many kinds of coronaviruses, including some that cause the common cold. So, we get those. But this deadly strain is called a novel coronavirus because it has not previously been identified in humans, so it's brand new. I guess that's why we got the idea it came from somebody in China. They were messing with the wrong type of animal, I guess. It's unusual for several reasons. Scientists believe this type of coronavirus jumped from a different animal to humans, which is rare. It then became transmissible from human to human. It then became transmissible from human to human, which is even more rare and infected person might not show symptoms for up to fourteen days after exposure, which is, seems to be rare because usually you show that matter day or so. That's especially worse because this novel coronavirus can be transmitted while a person still isn't showing any symptoms, so I think the symptoms are the same as some of the other things we always see, but it's just so easily transmissible and they have no way, they have, you know, we don't have a flu vaccination for it, so that's why it could be, you know, potentially dang, dangerous.
Yeah, the doctor I was listening to was saying that it was, it had jumped from a bat, it was a virus in a bat that had, had crossed, it usually never does that, but it had crossed and that's why it's so unique, that it had crossed into the human, that, that hardly ever happens and that's what's happened and that we don't have, we didn't, we can't treat it, it's like Patrick said, we just can't treat it.
Yeah.
We don't have, and they're, they're trying to develop a, a vaccine or a resistance to it and they just haven't got that developed yet, but I think they're really working hard on it from what I've heard. I think I said a few weeks ago that the Israelis had found, had stumbled on something that they were, but you've got to go through all those processes to get it approved, so maybe they can pretty soon get it approved, so then everybody can maybe get that and that'll stop it, you know, for, to where it doesn't come back, because I'm wondering, can it come back once it passes, you know?
Yeah, I think that's a question, there's too many unknowns right now and that's what's so scary about it, you know, will it come back, is it like a flu and, you know, will it die out this year when it warms up or will it come back next year? Lot, lot of unknowns.
Lot of unknowns, especially when you look at the equator, there's, there's cases.
Yeah.
Warm weather will help it. Thanks for that Kirk, appreciate it. Anybody have anything else? Any more medical advice? Okay, all right, I'll entertain a motion we adjourn then.
So moved.
Adjourn.
All in favor of indicating saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, we adjourn, thank y'all for coming.